Call to order, the meeting of the Salem School Committee of October 21st, 2024, at 7:00 PM. This meeting is taking place in person at 29 Highland Avenue, Room 227. You can also join via Zoom using the link posted in the meeting agenda. First order of business is approval of the agenda. Is Member Campbell remote?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Under discussion. Seeing none. Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We're going to take out of order, under Superintendent's report, a presentation of academic excellence certificates.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm really thrilled to give out this annual award. And this year, we're going to give out two awards, which are every year across the state of Massachusetts. The Association of School Superintendents has an award for academic excellence for seniors in districts across the state. And the criteria for being selected by a school is that, A, the person's a senior, they have a three-year cumulative average in the highest 5% of the class, they are a strong leader, they are a young person of impeccable character, and they're always pursuing excellence in their actions and the modeling they do for other young people in their school. And so I'm really proud to have two students here tonight that we are going to award the Association of School Superintendents Award. And it's definitely something to put on your resume and to promote as you plan for the next chapter, whether that's college or career for yourself. And so the first person, and what I'm going to ask, I'm going to read a quick blurb, I'm going to then ask them to come up and take a picture with the mayor and their principal, and I'm really thankful that Mr. Burns is here.
Me too.
And yeah, I'll be in the picture. Don't worry, Mayor, I won't leave you. And Principal Kama as well, from New Liberty. So the first is Thais Saldivar, who Salem High was proud to nominate. They are a dedicated student leader and exceptional individual at Salem High School with an impressive 3.9 cumulative GPA in rigorous coursework, including early college and advanced placement courses. Thais has demonstrated both academic excellence and a commitment to the school community. As a standout leader, Thais reads the daily announcements in Spanish showcasing their linguistic skills and dedication to inclusivity. Thais also serves as drum major for the Salem High School marching band and is an active member of the Tri-M music honor society, further emphasizing their passion for music. Additionally, Thais sings with the a cappella group Witch Pitch and participates in Chamber Singers, where their vocal talents shine. Last year, Thais showcased their acting ability, in case you missed it. Lead role in the production of The Addams Family, exceptional. Their contributions to the school community embody the spirit of leadership and creativity, and we can't wait to see what Thais accomplishes next. Let's give it up for Thais.
They'll come to you.
Will come to you.
Yeah. You don't do anywhere.
Mr. Burns, come on up here.
I was not in that impressive. That wasn't that impressive. Like the resume.
Okay, congratulations to you. Can I see the certificate if you want? There we go. All right. On three. One, two, three. One, two. I'm sure you have.
Congratulations, Thais.
Congratulations.
Bye. Okay. All right, our next recipient is Neo LaRue. Did I say that right? Okay. New Liberty Innovation School proudly nominated. Neo has shown tremendous growth over the years at New Liberty. His ability in writing can be top-notch, creative, yet concise. In addition to regular senior classes, Neo is independently working on an online course, Introduction to Computer Programming. Neo's attendance is both regular and punctual. Recently, Neo has shown tremendous leadership in youth groups along with vulnerability that he has yet been unwilling to share. In terms of character, Neo stays strong in his convictions while listening more openly to others' strong beliefs and not stepping on them. This, too, is evidence of personal growth, for which we are proud to nominate Neo for this award. Congratulations to Neo.
Congratulations, Neo.
I just chose the first slide. If you need a different one, just be polite. I'll help you, okay?
Yeah, open that. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Congratulations. Thank you to all the parents and staff members, too. We appreciate it.
All right, we'll now return to the agenda. The next item on the agenda is public comment. The Salem School Committee would like to hear from the public on issues that affect the school district and are within the scope of the committee's responsibilities. Spanish interpretation is available for anyone who needs it. The members of the school committee would like to remind the public that Salem Public Schools students regularly attend school committee meetings. We encourage all meeting participants to model respectful and productive public discourse for our young learners. I'll start with public comment in the room. Come on up to the microphone here.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, committee members. How are you? My name is Richard. I'm actually a local pastor here in Salem, Massachusetts. We recently rented this auditorium to have our services this Sunday. Come to find out, I might be in the wrong place, but I just want to make sure I could present this to you guys today. So with us having this service, I come to realize that a lot of people in our congregation actually came to this school. My wife herself is actually from Salem. She was born and raised, so she's been here her whole life. I've been here 10 years, so I guess I'm adopted now. But what hit me the most is that I realized that these schools have a big impact on these kids. My congregation is mostly youth and young adults. So everyone that was even here, been here, or they go here, right? So we're trying to impact our community by actually working together with the public school systems. And a lot of things that we were looking to do before, we couldn't just because we didn't have that relationship. So I'm actually here to see if we can build that relationship to kind of grow and help develop the youth in this community, because I know this day and age, there's a lot of emotions flying around with our youth, and they don't know how to react to it or express it, I should say, right? So that was a long introduction, just to say, we're looking to see if we can have some type of terms that we can use the auditorium for a year, for all Sundays, for our worship events, and any other events that we do, because we do want to have other events that will bring the community together and spread more of that of what we're trying to do here for our students, all right? But that was really pretty much it. Thank you.
Yeah, so we recommend you speak with the Bill and Ground Subcommittee. We'll get you connected with them.
Thank you.
Can you just leave your contact information with the folks at that table over there?
I'll give them the sign-in sheet.
What's that?
I'll give them the sign-in.
Sounds good.
Hi, I'm Lisa Hanson Demato from 53 Hathorne Street. And I will say, I'm the co-president this year of the PTO at Saltonstall, but I'm very much here in my capacity as mom and Salem resident, not as a PTO member. And what I never do, I actually have prepared comments. So I'm going to try and keep myself together. I bet you can hear me. So I don't often engage in arguments that I know I'm going to lose, so it is unusual for me to be here in this setting, but here we are. And I frankly was not even planning to come tonight, but after engaging with this body, I haven't written here for almost a decade, but I now realize it's actually more like 15 years that I've been engaging with this body on a variety of topics. I couldn't, as much as I wanted to be anywhere but here, not to be here for the conversation tonight. In 2007, this body voted to approve the expansion of our beloved Saltonstall from a K to five to a K to eight, and this was at the request of Saltonstall families, teachers, staff, and the Salem community at large, who are deeply devoted to the model that this amazing school offered, and because, quote, "Public education in Salem has a strong and longstanding commitment to offering parents choices at the public school," end quote, according to the then-superintendent. It's worth noting that the school committee at the time also indicated that families were seeking alternatives at the middle school level, and the district was attempting to retain more children who might otherwise choose the charter school. Families who chose Saltonstall for their middle school have always known that Salts is a small school. It wouldn't ever be anything but, and for two years, actually was in the church on Federal Street, and was a very small school. And there were limitations then and now, based both on the small size of the student body and the physical plant of the school. But even still, year after year, families made the choice to enroll and then stay at Saltonstall, with long waiting lists back when we used to do that. What Saltonstall lacked in physical plant, it more than made up for with the benefits of the K to eight model, close-knit community, and a host of programming and experiences that made many families willing to give up what Collins had to offer in exchange for the unmatched middle school experience at Saltonstall. My Owen is in eighth grade now, has been at Salts for nine years, and in that time, I've watched our programming and frankly entire school experience be slashed and decimated, candidly, to the point that when I reflect on it, I think if some, not too long ago, former Saltonstall parents or kids walked in the door, they would be very surprised to see Saltonstall today compared to what their experience was, not that long ago. We're not talking about, like historically, when I was a kid. This was like within the last 10 years. And I know that Dr. Sreik is very tired of hearing the list of what our community has lost, but here is a non-existent, non-exhaustive list of what's been cut, programming that used to make our school the one with a waiting list, and frankly, what many other schools wanted to model and mimic. Friday Club, Extended Year, Modified Schedule, Inter Session, Multi-Age Classrooms, Project-Based and Interdisciplinary Learning, National Junior Honor Society, Destination Imagination, New York, Philadelphia, Nature's Classroom, A School Play, Eric Rodenheiser's annual fabulous production of The Grinch. And as I pointed out to Dr. Sreik, we have props on our stage right now from 2019, which was the last time we had any programming on our stage, five years ago. Portfolio, gone. All of this is gone. And all of this is gone, not like 25 years ago, but everything except for one item on this list has been in my time at Saltonstall that we've lost this. So when Dr. Sreik presented that we had a 50% attrition at grade six this year, up from approximately 5% just a few years ago, and a parent asked the root cause, which clearly there are lots of things that are the root cause, for anyone inside of this community, it's really not hard to see. And I know that this decision has all but been made, though it will be made by you at some point, but I do want to leave with two additional points. Parents were notified of this proposal by letter last Friday, October 18th. Zero business days before tonight's meeting, and only two weeks before a vote is scheduled for November 4th. We spend six months talking about budget, engaging the public, having meetings, having forums, and months on end debating things, I would come with a list, but it would be embarrassing, that frankly don't matter very much, that we spend weeks and weeks and months and months deliberating about. But potentially closing a school, which I know we're not doing, gets two weeks? Finally, and most important, at this point where you are now, I'd like to stress my strong reservations for a plan that results in no choice at the middle school. Dr. Sreik and others have taken this opportunity to offer a pitch about Collins, which I'm sure he wouldn't call it, but I am. And Collins is doing great work. My kid is in eighth grade. He's got friends that are here who are happy, and this school is serving a lot of kids really, really well. The data supports that, anecdotes support that. But no school is ever going to be right for every kid. We have five public elementary schools, three public high schools, and at every other grade level, parents have options that do not require them to leave the district. For a district that has always allegedly valued choice, I'd urge you to consider the implications of this decision on that.
Any further comment in the room? Seeing none. Any comment online? Next item on the agenda will be, actually, if it's all right, we'll move down to the Student Representatives Report out of order. Seeing no objection. Would you like to introduce our new student representative?
Yeah, I'm very pleased to introduce our new student representative on the school committee. It took a few weeks, but we have a real-life person here, and that is Mark Qualkenbush. Did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
Okay. And I'll let you tell the committee a little bit about yourself. I've had, I'll just say, I've had the pleasure of working with Mark for the last year and a half, or I would say, year on the Student Advisory Committee, and I've enjoyed working with him. And he was elected by his peers to serve as chair of the committee, which means that you automatically get the unbelievable job of being, coming to school committee meetings twice a month and serving with this fine group of people. But I'll let you introduce yourself, Mark, and then just give a little update on the Student Advisory Committee.
Well, hi, everybody. My name's Mark. As you may have heard, I'm a senior at Salem High School. And currently, I'm in a lot of AP classes. I'm currently enrolled in the Early College Program. And as of right now, I'm looking to study environmental science at Boston University. I'm currently the varsity captain of the boys tennis team. I'm president of the National Honor Society. And I'm very glad I'm here to represent the Salem Public Schools as a student. And currently, in the Superintendent Advisory Group, the last thing we really went over in our meeting was the implementation or the talking about of an implemented driver's ed system into the school that would allow for students to have a more, it would be a better access towards a currently very expensive program for kids to be able to get their license. And right now, we are talking about how it would open up a lot of opportunities for people who may not have the funding or the capacity in their schedule for driver's ed. And we haven't talked a lot of specifics about it, but it's just something that we brought up. We brought up a lot about youth sports in the school system and how it might impact the sports at the high school and middle school levels. And that's a lot of what we've talked about so far.
Great. Thanks, Mark. And there were elections, and Mark was selected as the chair. Barbara Rowley was selected as the vice chair. And the team is looking to recruit more students, and we're going to be sending out. They want to grill their classmates about who can join. So they want to do interviews to make sure they're committed to the work of the advisory group. And we're also working very hard to recruit at New Liberty and at Salem Prep. And so already, we have a strong student rep from New Liberty who's going to speak at both campuses to recruit more students from there. So thanks for being here, Mark. On quick notice, I think you were just elected last Tuesday, and here you are, less than a week later, and appreciate you being here. We'll make sure we'll make it official with a name plate. That, you know, those are prize name plates, so we'll get yours as soon as we can. But we'll turn it over to the committee, see if they have any questions.
Any questions or comments for our new student representative? Yeah, Member Cornell?
Well, welcome again. But just on the driver's ed thing, you all, I assume you've met Representative Cruz already? Maybe not?
He came to that first meeting.
I think he came to one of your meetings.
He came to our first meeting, yeah.
Okay, so he's on this body also, but in his role as state representative, he has been advocating for some changes to driver's ed, so I would talk to him about that.
Thank you.
Good. Welcome aboard. Great to have you. Next item on the agenda will return to regular orders, approval of the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the school committee meeting of October 7th and the warrants of October 17th.
Second.
Under discussion. Seeing none. Roll call vote. Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. Superintendent's report.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So we're going to start with, well, we did the academic excellence certificates out of order, but we're going to talk about the Saltonstall middle school grade recommendation. So we'll start with that. If we could put that up on the screen. This is essentially the same presentation that I gave last Wednesday night to staff and families at Saltonstall. I know there were a few committee members there. And I didn't change anything in this presentation. I will make some different editorial comments as we go along, but I just wanted to make sure that the entire committee had this information for, you know, potential discussion and conversation over the next few weeks, depending on when the vote will actually, whether the committee wants to have a vote and when it will take place. So next slide, please. Actually, I think I have the clicker. Here we go. All right. So tonight's agenda, just, we'll share some updates on the middle school grades at Saltonstall, the future of middle school grades. And then, we did ask for input about potential options, which we have, we took notes from the conversations we had with families. And then we have a survey right now that's collecting input, and I'll share the questions we've asked. So far, we've had already 35 responses to the family survey, and I have to check the teacher survey or the staff survey as well. And then I want to just provide information on the timeline and next steps to the committee. So the recommendation that I made on Wednesday evening, and as Ms. Hanson referenced, it was followed up with a letter on Friday, which I've shared with the school committee, that letter. The recommendation is to shift middle school grades to Collins beginning in SY 2526, which would be next fall. And the why behind that is we've heard a lot of feedback from educators about concern about resources and the overall experience for students at Saltonstall over the last few years. From students, I've had a chance to speak to some of Mark's colleagues on the Student Advisory Group who were concerned, not about being prepared academically, but more so socially for the high school experience, given that, you know, most of the students knew each other from Collins, and many of the Saltonstall students, it was a small group, and they didn't have as many social connections. That was some feedback I received. At no point did they talk about not being prepared academically. I want to be clear about that. And then families, we had the opportunity to speak with families. We did some, in last year, in June, we had some community conversations. It wasn't all Saltonstall. And I've had chances to speak with families. Again, there are many families who are really passionate about their experience at the school, and then others who have, you know, expressed concerns. And I did want to share just some of the rates of attrition from fifth to sixth grade over the last few years. If you look before, '21, '22, actually, the attrition was almost negligible, and students weren't leaving the school. But from '22 on to last year, the attrition rates have been at least 22%. And then last year was 50% of the class left after fifth grade to go to other choices, whether that was Collins, Salem Academy, or private school options. I do think some of that was because people were speculating that there might be changes to the school, as there had been discussions with staff and community members about that over the last year. So I, you know, I look at that number as maybe not entirely accurate, but it is a sign, certainly over the last three years, that parents are making different decisions about where their child goes to middle school. I think the next one for me is really important, as a why, is making sure that we create a universally high equitable middle school experience across the Salem Public Schools. You know, while I think there are strengths and opportunities at both schools, Collins has, over the last few years, really strengthened its offerings to students. And so we've been able to offer innovative and redesigned eighth-grade experience, for instance, that offers project-based learning, personalized, community-based learning emergence, that was the pilot, which you've all heard about, which is now the eighth-grade experience. And while Saltonstall is participating in these experiences, it's not as, we're not able to make it as comprehensive because it's split over two campuses. It's also really hard for us to replicate all the same programs across two sites. I do think Saltonstall offers a lot of really important and unique opportunities for kids that we would like to continue, and we should really think about replicating. But overall, grouping all the students together in one site allows us to target our resources and to scale services and programming. You know, Collins also is able to offer many after-school programs for students and enrichment programs, just because of the numbers, the sheer number of kids that they have in terms of multiple pathways for students that they can select from. Currently, students have, for Saltonstall students, have access to those programs. Many times, they have to take a bus to get over here, which is very messy. And for all of you who know what that looks, I see the administration here. It's choppy. The times don't line up, and the buses are often delayed, and kids are getting here late, which is a suboptimal experience for those students, whether it's in sports or whether it's in the drama program after school. And we want to make sure that all students have access to that high level of programming we have. We also can offer a lot more counseling and therapeutic supports to students, especially around special education services. Saltonstall does have special education services, inclusion, and they have one substantially separate program, the language-based program. But all the other services are here at Collins, and we obviously have a wealth of those supports in place at a school that's, you know, four and a half times the size. The final thing I'd say around it is that around, you know, the middle school experience, it's no shock here. It's hard to find middle school teachers. I do see some very talented middle school teachers in the audience here, a couple. There, there's not a line out the door of people who want to teach middle school. I'm not going to say what I, you know, these are special people. And the fact is, it's very hard to find middle school teachers, especially to teach multiple grades in multiple content areas. It's also pretty isolating if you're the only seventh-grade English teacher or you're the only eighth-grade math teacher to not have another peer to plan with. And I do worry a lot about being able to attract and retain educators when there isn't a support system and a culture that supports them. Not because, you know, the other staff aren't collaborative, it's just the nature of being in a small, strained school. At middle school, you have to know your content, and you want to be able to plan with other people who share, you know, who are teaching the same content as you are. And that's, we obviously have the ability to have teams here at Collins across grade levels, cross-grade levels, that are not, that we're not able to have in the same way at Saltonstall. Achievement concerns. Middle school achievement's been an issue for us across the bar. We just did the presentation on the MCAS, and where we lagged the most in this district is in middle school. So it's hard to say that the achievement is any different, except that we've seen a decline in achievement at Saltonstall over the last few years, every year. Although I would say, again, both schools struggle with their achievement levels. Growth was a little higher at Collins, but what I do, what we do worry about is making sure that we can, we have a lot of work to do at the middle school level in terms of performance. I do think for Saltonstall, one of the challenges has been that they have a new group of middle schoolers who have come in over the last few years, who are new to Salem. And again, I'm not trying to make excuses, but it is hard when kids aren't within the system, and it didn't come all the way through. Before, Saltonstall was able to retain many of their fifth to sixth graders. Now they have, as you saw this year, 50% of the sixth graders are new, and that makes it hard in order to, you know, build continuity of achievement. Our chronic absenteeism has been, some of the engagement indicators, I should say, have been a little more concerning at Saltonstall. Again, just in Again, in the, just in the last few years, around the survey that we give, which is Panorama, there is a little bit of a discrepancy between Collins and Saltonstall, and students feeling excited and interested in school. You know, most middle schoolers are not that excited about school in general, so take that with however you think about surveys of middle schoolers. But chronic absenteeism to, to me, and to the work we do as a system, is symptomatic of other issues around culture. And the chronic data is much higher at Saltonstall than at Collins. There's a significant difference at the middle school level. And I will say, Saltonstall has some tremendous achievement data. They were one of the highest-performing schools in terms of meeting their targets, and their elementary data was incredibly high. That, we didn't see that in the, in the middle school grades in the same way. And chronic absenteeism, no shock, if kids aren't in school, it's very hard to achieve at the same level. And then suspensions, that's another sign, when there are high levels of suspensions, it does say that kids are generally, I don't think we have bad kids, but, but certainly the culture seems problematic, just looking at some of that data. And Saltonstall, being a much smaller school, had a much higher suspension, sheer number of suspensions, had more suspensions than Collins, even though Collins was four and a half times bigger. So those are just some of the indicators that we looked at and are thinking about, and that I was thinking about in making this recommendation. So what I proposed at the meeting on Wednesday was two different options, and what I shared with staff, and were, is, the first option would be that there would be a phase-out over three years, so that next year, all fifth to sixth, all six, rising sixth graders from Saltonstall would be assigned to Collins. And then the current sixth graders and the current seventh graders could stay to finish out their middle school years, so that it would be over three years, so that anybody who had begun middle school could continue and, until their middle school years were complete. So that was one option that was presented. The second option was that next year, all sixth to eighth graders, all rising sixth to eighth graders would come to Collins. That way, the middle school would effectively cease for next year at Saltonstall, and all their students would be assigned to Collins, which would be about 140 students. We have plenty of room here at Collins. You know, we're at just over 600 students. At one time, this building had, you know, again, Ms. Manning could tell you all those details, but over 1,000 students, well over 1,000 students.
Over 1,300.
Over 1,300, to be exact. And so those are the two options that I've asked the school committee to consider, but I wanted to get feedback from staff and from families alike about this option. I'm sorry, about these two options. The decision timeline that I proposed, and of course, this is subject to change from the school committee, and you're welcome to, to offer different suggestions of this, is obviously, some of these things have already happened. There has been a meeting with staff, there has been a meeting with parents. There is another community meeting on Wednesday night, virtually. We wanted to give an option for families that couldn't make it in person, to effectively share the same presentation that we did the other night. It's no different, but to hear from different folks. And then obviously, the first school committee presentation and discussion. And then requesting if the school committee is, is apt to do so, would be to vote on the 4th of November. But again, that can be part of your discussion here tonight about the timeline for this decision to be made. We obviously wanted to give families ample time to make choices and to be aware of this. We didn't want to wait until the new calendar year, and we obviously want to work with staff. And I'll just share a little bit about supporting families and students, and then staff. We do think there needs to be some unique experiences just for Saltonstall students who would be coming, a special move-up day for students. Obviously, depending on what the option is that the school committee selects, it could involve just fifth to sixth, or it could involve all middle school students. We want to make sure that students have an opportunity to ask questions of other students. And I also think it's really important that there's a strong finish and transition for middle school students. Like, we have to, this year can't be a lost year for students. I know under Principal Jellison and Assistant Principal Evolus' leadership, that's not going to happen, but we want to make sure that we end strong, whatever the end looks like, and whatever the transition looks like for students. And then for families, we also think they need specialized time where the, the leadership team from Collins going to Saltonstall to have an information session with the families there, that we, you know, we have a showcase, that we bring other, I've already had some families already volunteer to offer, to, to give test, be part of the testimonials about their experience at Collins, in sessions for families as well. So we want to make sure, again, a lot of this has to be dictated depending on what the school committee, if the school committee, A, decides that they're going to go forward with my recommendation, and B, depending on what option is chosen for moving forward. With staff, had this, we met with staff, we also want to make sure they receive the supports. We have very talented staff at, at Colin, I mean, at Saltonstall. There's obviously going to be, be the need for additional staff here at Collins if students come over. So they'll, anybody with professional status is automatically guaranteed a position in the Salem public schools. But there's also staff that don't have professional status, who are really dedicated to Salem, want to be here, we want them, whether that's at Collins, or whether that's in other schools in the district, or I'm sure Ms. Jellison would want to keep some with openings that she has as well. And so we want to work with the staff who are in good standing, I would say, people who are, again, really dedicated to us, to our children, most importantly, our students, and who really want to be part of the direction of the Salem public schools. We'll work with them. We want to do some resume building, we want to give them first crack at interviews with other school leaders who may have opportunities, and so forth. So that's, and we want to engage with them and with families and students before the end of the calendar year, because we think it's important that we get out in front for these families who are, this, this community that will be affected in ways that others won't be this school year. What we've asked for, the conversation, the questions that I posed that were part of the survey that we sent out are twofold. One is, what input do you have about the overall recommendation? And the second is between the two approaches, phasing out, or over two years, or shifting all middle schoolers to Collins next year? What is people's preference and why? Those are the questions that we posed in our surveys in, in three languages to families. We've asked staff the same questions, and we took notes the other night. I will share all that information with you prior to whenever the decision, right now it's scheduled for November 4th, but whenever that is, so that you have a chance to read everybody's comments, that, you know, the input that we've received in the last few weeks from the public meetings and from the surveys. So I'm going to stop there and turn it back over to the committee to see if there's any questions or comments related to this presentation.
Thanks. I'll start. Member Campbell has a question.
Yeah, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
No.
Okay.
Not really.
I know sometimes, I, no.
Can we ask her to hang on?
Okay.
Standby. All right, go ahead.
Okay, how about now? Is that good? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I had a couple of particular, I don't want to say concerns about the proposal. I think some of my questioning and my thinking around this in particular is not that Saltonstall has a different model, but that that different model is not accessible for all students at various points. I think the attrition data really shows that we're, we're not great at guessing what type of program our kiddos are going to need when they're in kindergarten. And so, you know, some folks are finding that their kids are looking for a larger middle school experience, whereas I think there are others who are at different elementary schools who are realizing that maybe their kids would benefit from a smaller middle school approach, but don't have that option. And so, in terms of finding a middle ground here, I'm wondering, Dr. Zrake, what sort of consideration you've given to building out smaller middle school modeling, either located at Collins or located elsewhere? You know, Ms. Hanson de Matteo pointed out that we do have that at the high schools, and that is sort of weighing on my mind of like, I think most educators know that some kids need a different middle school experience, and that's true for all kids, whether they're at Saltonstall right now, in elementary school, or at a different one. And what can we be doing to provide that model?
Yeah, so I think that's a great point. I mean, we've already started building out at Collins some smaller models. There is the Connect program that they've built out here, replicated after Salem High, that Assistant Principal Marook and Brad Maloon have built out to provide extra support for students that were deemed at risk and needed extra support during the school day. I do think we have to think about additional pathways within the school. I worry a lot about, and Kate and I, Deputy Superintendent Carboni and I talk a lot about this, of creating new spaces or programs in schools, because if you build them, kids will be sent there. And I worry about doing that on other campuses, because I do, we do want our students to, and while I think at the high school level, it's, you know, we're trying very hard, it's complicated, to, to give all high schoolers access to everything Salem High offers, you know, I worry a lot about creating additional small schools where kids don't, won't have access to the CTE programs that we may try to build out at the middle school level, at the after-school programs. So I'd, I'd prefer to think about how do we build, like you said, you know, continue to build pathways within the school that feel small and connected for young people. And I think we can do more of that. I think that's already started under Principal Softik's leadership here, but I think we could do more of that to give families more choice. We are trying to give kids a lot more choice here, so they're selecting the pathways that they want to be at, that they're not just assigned. It's imperfect, but we're getting, we're getting, we're getting there. I mean, and so, we think we, we have a better chance of creating that experience in one place where we have, where we give kids access to all the pathways, so they don't feel like they have to be compromised in their choices. I don't know if that answers your question, Ms. Campbell.
It does a bit, yeah. I think it's helpful to kind of hear where your head is at with that. And I think in terms of clarification from me, I don't necessarily want something where kids are sent based on decisions that, you know, school-based adults are making, but rather options and choices that, you know, kids and their caregivers are making in their best interest, and, you know, having that opportunity for agency and voice and choice over it. So that's more so what I'm thinking, because I do agree, I think when you create specialized pathways and families don't have choices over it, it doesn't really do the intended effect. But I mean, that is helpful. I just, I think it might be more helpful to have something very clearly articulated so that families have an understanding of what types of options are available, rather than at Collins, you know?
Yeah, and if that's a request that you have of me to make sure we come back and explain what those options are in detail, I mean, that's certainly, I mean, I expressed it in the meeting Wednesday night, that is a concern I have about the Saltonstall, you know, shifting out the middle school there is, you know, I do want there to be, and I appreciate Ms. Hanson's point, I do want there to be other options and pathways for kids. Doesn't have to necessarily be in a separate school, it can be within a larger school. But I do agree that those need to exist, because one, one model doesn't fit all kids.
Other members?
Thanks. And then, sorry, just my last comment on it, I'll get it all out of the way upfront, is in terms of like a phase-out versus a more, I guess, abrupt approach to the transition. I know that it can feel really hard and really abrupt, but I don't think there are many examples if we do decide to go this route. I don't think there are many examples of like phased transitions working particularly well. If there are examples out there, I'm not aware of them. I did do some of my own digging. I think it can be really hard to be living out a transition, so, you know, if, if it's the will of the committee to choose this approach, although I do think it's difficult, I think it's harder for kids and staff to be in a program that is closing or ceasing, I think that takes a toll on them. So that's just something that I would flag for folks in terms of where my head is at. I'm not saying I definitely want to go this route. I absolutely want to hear more about small program optioning at Collins. But a transition staggered approach is really hard on kids, even though it sounds like it, it would be easier.
Thanks. Member Manning?
Yeah, I had a couple of thoughts, just following up on what Amanda was saying. I mean, I'm sorry, I think Steve was saying about if you open a program, people will go, they'll just go fill it, you know, that, and there are lots of ways to personalize or, or control the size of, of the experience in a big building. It's particularly because it's a big building you can do it, because you have the space to, to do smaller programs and smaller communities within the, within the building. I was, I was just, as, as Dr. Zrake was talking, thinking of like one example that, that we did have at the middle school for seventh and eighth grade, was if students simply needed more, they needed more, being taken care of, but also more structure at the same time. Usually, it was a, you know, a situation of maybe something outside school that was affecting their ability inside school. And, but we had smaller class, classes, we called it regular ed self-contained. And the self-contained part was simply for the academic part of the day. They, students had one teacher for the four major subjects, then they went to word language and to all the specialists and lunch and all that with everybody. But it just, it allowed, if the kid had a good day, a phone call home. If they didn't, a phone call home. If they needed a hug at the end of the day, and maybe you can't do that now, but they got a hug at the end of the day. You know, if they needed, you know, to be maybe some extra help or extra structure or extra something at the end of the day, they could get that too. But my point about it is that it connects to what Steve said about opening programs and then people just going, because that was a seventh and eighth grade approach that helped a lot of students, but we did not have it in the sixth grade. And we specifically didn't have it in the sixth grade, because we felt that if we had it, then every fifth grade teacher in the city would have 10 out of their 20 students that absolutely needed to be in this program, because the fifth grade, fifth grade teachers were just as afraid of the middle school as the parents were. So they, you know, we, we said, no, everybody comes to the middle school, and then we can, you know, everybody gets a, an extra chance in the, in the regular program, you know, that's not identified for special ed, whatever, but just, you know, after the fifth grade, after the sixth grade, we figured out, okay, these are the kids who really need something different. And I'm not saying that's the best way to do it, I'm just saying that's an example of something that can be done, and it did work. It worked for a lot of kids for years. But it specifically made me think of, I thought of that, because if you have something that's an alternative, it's going to fail, like instantly, because some parents will do anything they can do to not have a student in something they're afraid of. And then the parents are afraid of the big program and the big, you know, so it's, it's a self-fulfilling thing, really. My other comment has more to do with how I'm thinking about this whole thing, and I'm thinking that I feel rushed in this. And I understand that we, we want to get the decision made and do what we need to do, depending on how the vote comes out. But I don't want to do that without enough discussion and enough time and enough opportunities for us as a committee to, to talk and to share ideas and explore some ideas. And I don't feel that tonight, when the presentation was just made, and I know some of us were there the other night, and I know we've been talking about this, but the actual formal presentation was just made, and to say that we're going to talk about it tonight, and then come in on the 4th and vote, and so, okay, have some time to talk about it before we vote, but I, I'm not feeling that's enough. And I've been sort of following this, so I, you know, it's not that I don't, you know, know a lot about what the suggestions are and what the, you know, different ways that this can all play out and everything, I just feel rushed. And I'm suggesting that if you, if we want to keep to the 4th, that's still a short period of time, but if that was the majority rule here, that we stay on the vote of the 4th, then I at least would request that we have a committee of the whole, that we can have some time discussing this. I would prefer, myself, to have the committee of the hall on the 11th and have another meeting that maybe the next week. But, so that would push it to like the 14th, or whatever, the 4th and 7th, or the 11th, or what, you know, around there. I'd be, I'd be content with either one. I'd prefer that we actually push it out and get together to discuss it. We can't talk about it, you know, in, we have to have it at a meeting, we can't just, you know, randomly go talk at Maria's or something. you know, randomly go talk at Maria's or something. So I'm looking for at least a delay that lets us have a conversation that isn't at a meeting. Tonight, we get the information. The fourth, we take the vote. There's something that I think is missing in there. I think we need to get together and be able to have a, whatever amount of time the conversation takes. And then have that, and then have a little bit of more time to actually think, now that we've gotten together and had that, that lengthfully thoughtful reflective conversation together, now go back and ruminate, make a decision, and then have the vote.
I agree with Member Manning. I find it really valuable particularly to get Member Campbell and Member Manning's perspective as people who are educators, you know, and so I'd like to be able to talk that through. I'm particularly, I think I have been focused on the parent side of sort of what this would feel like for kids to phase them out or to pull, you know, we keep saying the, they have like sort of pulling the Band-Aid off and doing it right away. I'm less clear about how it affects educators in the building, you know, how disruptive that might be, how alienating that might be. So I would appreciate the group conversation, a little time to reflect, and then a vote.
I would like to agree with Member Manning about, I think that the time between right now and the fourth is a bit, is a very short amount of time. And I agree with Member Manning about how the, I feel like there should be something in between to talk about it. And I also had a question for Dr. Zarek, and I was wondering if there was any input from these students about the transition from a K through eight to a K through five model.
Yeah, that's a great question, Mark. I did, we did speak to, I know that at the school, the principal has spoken to, and the assistant principal has spoken to students, but I have taken input from students who went through the K eight model. But I think, you know, one thing, well, let me finish answering your question, then I'll share one thing that was shared with me that I think is important to consider too, is we, is I think, you know, I've heard a lot from students who have been through the K eight experience. I think we have to listen a lot to the students who are at Salt and Stall now about making sure that we're honoring their, you know, their experience and that we're supporting them through a transition that feels right. We don't want this to, you know, we don't want them to have a lost final year if that's what this committee chooses to do. So I think, but I'm going to leave that up to the educators at the school who have the relationships with students, so that we're making sure. Ms. Jellison, who's out there, and Ms. Evolith have already given me a lot of input about how students are feeling. And that should guide some of the decisions we make. I did, one thing that was shared with me from a community member that you just reminded me of, is I do think we should talk to folks that were involved in the bountage situation, not that it's entirely the same, but staff who were part of that and receiving students. I think that's a really important suggestion, and really to talk about what went well and what are some things that we can improve on. Again, not exactly the same set of circumstances, but I think there can be some lessons learned by, by all of us, and certainly myself. I wasn't here at that point, but I think there are things that we should definitely be considering in our planning. I thought that was a really good suggestion. And there are, while there hasn't been a lot of changes at Collins, for instance, there are staff that were here and who can, can give me some of their thoughts on what we could do better. And thanks, Mark, for jumping right in here.
Member Miranda?
Yeah, just echoing some of what others have already said. I did want to talk about this as a body as soon as possible, but I wasn't thinking that meant, you know, to vote on it. I would be in favor of pushing it out to December. I understand that we want to give people as much time as possible, but I don't really see a reason to rush it. Just wanted to make a couple comments or things that I'm thinking of here. I understand that we want to create pathways within Collins that make it feel really like small and connected, and that some of that work is happening. I do worry about kids, students that, you know, either have mental health concerns, or students that know that they're coming into a larger building with more students, and the paralyzing, like anxiety that that can cause kids. So I'd like to know, like, what does this mean for our 504 process? What does this mean for our IEP process? What does it mean for bullying? And, and the supports that we would have here, additional supports, obviously, for that. Additionally, just in terms of, like, we spoke about, you know, renaming the school, and now we're talking about removing the middle. And so I just want to kind of name that that is, it's basically closing the, the school to some extent, if you combine those two things that we've talked about as a body. And so I'd be a bit concerned about what that means for school identity, for students, for parents, for staff. And I understand that we have culture work to do, and I'm all for that. It does sound like there was some under-investment, and I'd like to learn a little bit more about that. I would like some data, and I'll continue to dive into this, on achievement in K to five models versus K to eight, as Mark had mentioned. And data on the phase transitions, as Member Campbell had mentioned. And that's all I'll say for now. Thank you.
Member Manning?
Yeah, a couple of things. I just would want to comment on Bethian's mention of the, the staff. And if I understood it correctly, I think what you were saying was, out of like the three prongs, like parents, students, and staff, you would worry about the staff the less, or, no?
No, I'm just less informed about how it would affect the staff.
Oh, okay.
I've heard their perspectives on, but I'm not sure how it affects them on a day-to-day level. That's what I mean.
Okay, all right, good. No, no, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that that's what you meant, because my experience has been that this is really tough on staff, and we do need to make sure we're supporting them. And I know that there aren't a lot, as far as I think, of staff at Salt and Stall who have been there for a long time in the middle school grades, but there still are staff who have been at Salt and Stall who are, it's going to hit, you know? And so we do need to worry and take care of them. And take care of the staff that are going to have incoming if we do this. I know that the issue of bountage, and Steve, when you were talking about asking, getting input from the teachers that, that, when the bountage closed, and, and I think that's a really good idea, because both elementary and middle school, you know, levels received kids from bountage. But it just made me think of another part of that whole bountage situation. And I feel like some of the Salt and Stall situation is the same thing. And that's that the people that were remembering and were basically mourning, and I understand that, mourning the closing of bountage, and similar to folks that are mourning, you know, the potential closing of the Salt and Stall Middle School, that those, both of those situations, from what I understand, basically had changed several years ago. And the people were remembering, I remember bountage parents very upset it, because they had gone to the bountage and had a wonderful experience. And I remember trying, you know, having conversations, trying to have folks understand that that wasn't the bountage that we were closing. It was a different school by that time. And similar, I think, you know, for some of the Salt and Stall situations. And I know that we want to, we want to make sure that we, we take care of the, the students. But I just want to point out that a lot of the students already know a lot of the students. You know, the kids that go to Salt and Stall don't just do Salt and Stall things. They run sports teams, you know, with kids from Collins and the kids from, you know, not, not the school teams, I'm talking about youth sports in the city, the rec, all through the rec or whatever. You know, a lot of the students already know each other, you know? And I think that there are, there are very few students, I think, that would not know anybody and not have somebody in their classes, just on, from outside experiences. And then the other, the other thing is that a lot of the things, and I understand it's a, it's an exhaustive list, but a lot of the things on, on the list of items that Lisa mentioned, that you mentioned from, from Salt and Stall, really several of those things didn't originate at Salt and Stall. They're just things that were happening in schools. Salt and Stall is going back to what it was. I mean, they were a K to five school from 1994 to 2007. If we do this, if we vote this, they're actually going back to the identity they had much longer than they had as a middle school. And they had an identity as the multiple intelligences, intelligences school for a long time. And that, you know, you know, things change. But I think we just, we need a long, as I said, a longer time to talk about the changes in the, in the future. And try to keep in mind that we need to take care of all the kids, the parents, and the staff. And, you know, we need some time to do that, to figure it out.
Member Cornell?
I also think for the community, because not everybody in the community is sort of, you know, you are coming to the, to Salz with a lot more institutional knowledge than I have, right? And I've been in the district for 18 years, a parent in the district. And, but I, I think too, parent, I think families were having an exceptional experience at Salz. I think that's absolutely true, and I absolutely understand the mourning of that experience. I also don't think Salz was ever an equitable opportunity for students in the city. You know, from the time that we had choice, straight through to the development of the middle school, the district was always at X percentage of, of low-income and free and reduced lunch kids, and Salz was always over 20% lower than that number, always. It was disproportionately middle-class and white, always. And so that changed, that did not begin to change until 2019. And I think that there was a real culture shift at the school that is, you know, I think there's some discussion of maybe, you know, under-resourcing, but there's also a cultural shift that happened that, that I think needed more guidance when those changes happened in the district. So, you know, that equity, that equity piece was always glaring for anybody who had kids, you know, during that period of time. And, you know, I don't think it, I don't think it's effective to point fingers, you know? But Salz isn't, isn't, hasn't been serving its middle school population for a few years, and that's our job. That is the only job we have, is not to sort of litigate how we got to this point, but to make sure that every child who's in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade is having an equally exceptional experience. And so that's where I do, even though I, I get this feeling of rushing, I've also never been comfortable with the Salz model, because it's always been exclusive. And that's, and it's, it's hard to argue otherwise. Even if it worked, it's always been exclusive. So, but I do feel a real sense of urgency for the students who can have more. They can have more experiences, they can have more support, they can have more wraparound services, and I don't like the idea of making anybody wait for it.
Member Hoffman?
I just want to say, I was one of the Horseman families when the bountage and Horseman came down. And my view on this would be that we work strongly to build a community of the two schools. I think it's important to, I think, to remember that there are two communities joining at this point, and sometimes rumors get started or things get said, and we have to be very cautious about what our kids hear. And this is not, neither that situation or this is anything bad against either school. It's just, we have to look out what's for the best interest of our kids at this point in time, and what we can offer them. So I just want to make sure that we build a community between the two schools so that it is a seamless move and not a begrudging move to a new situation. And I think here we also have a lot of support staff that can help kids with anxiety, and we can do tours, and we can do tours for parents as well. Like, we can make it as comfortable as possible, and that's what I would like to see done. It's a hard decision.
Dr. Zarek?
Yeah, I just want to say just two things. I would just caution on delaying too long. I understand the need to extend, but like, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in planning to, Member Hoffman's suggestion, I want to make sure we do it right. And I don't think it's fair to staff and students to know as soon as possible, but I respect the need to give there be more space for the discussion. So I'll just say that. The second thing is, I really take, I, I don't, this is not, not investing in Salt and Stall. I, there were, you know, we have had to work really hard to invest wherever the needs were over the last few years. The pandemic threw us all for a loop. I, there is no evidence that would suggest that Salt and Stall wasn't invested in. It's near impossible to offer what, the full middle school experience with having only two classes per grade. I can't speak to all the other programs that existed, many of them which were parent-run programs at Salt and Stall. But there is no way to offer what I, I think we, we're very lucky in Salem to offer a lot of programs at the middle and high school level that a lot of other districts don't have. But it's, like I said, it's hard for us to replicate those same things on two different campuses. And so I would just, anybody who questions that there wasn't the same level investment, I think we, in some ways, were over-investing because it was so small, but we wanted to at least have some of the things that Collins was having. I do believe that was being supplemented by a lot of really dedicated and committed families and, and staff who were working really hard to offer those things. I don't, frankly, I don't think parents have the same bandwidth that they had before the pandemic. I know, I don't, I mean, I don't, I mean, again, don't judge me for how much I'm involved in my child's school. But the reality is that that doesn't, that we don't have, parents are not able to do, for obvious reasons, what they maybe were able to do before. And so it is incumbent on the school to make sure that we're providing a strong experience for all kids. This is not a financial decision or recommendation. This is purely about what we see right now, what I see, what other folks at my team that we think is in the best interest of kids. This has nothing to do with any budget deficit, has nothing to do with the future grade configurations in the Salem Public Schools. This is right now, and I, honestly, I think it's educational malpractice not to make a decision that, that supports what I think are our most vulnerable kids in the system, our middle school students right now. So turn it back over to you, Mayor.
If I can just make one comment?
Member Manning?
The other night, when you, Steve, when you're talking about, you don't want to wait too long. I mean, and I just, I want to come, an ability to have one conversation sometime between two meetings.
Sure, no, I respect that.
That's all. But the, because the, the other night at the forum, those of you that were there, one of the parents asked what was the biggest takeaway that I had from, you know, being involved when, when we closed the bountage. And I gave a couple of reasons. And then I, I spoke briefly again, because the more I thought about it, the biggest takeaway I had from that was that we waited too long as a committee. We just, we let it linger, we let it fester, we thought, oh, we'll throw more something or other in, and we'll try something else. And really, we waited way too long. And I don't want that to happen now, you know? So I'm very much appreciative that we're taking a look at this, because I really don't think that any of us want to be in a position where we're thinking we waited too long, you know?
Any further comments?
So I have some follow-up questions related specifically to data that I want to, I'll, I'll send separately. A question regarding the surveys, were those provided to all Salt and Stu, Salt and Stal school families, or just middle school grades, or just elementary school?
No, we sent it to all, and I can make sure that we continue to send it out. But it was sent to all families.
All right. And you've got 35 responses so far?
So far, yeah, there were 35.
Okay. Were students invited to take that survey, or is it?
They were not, they were not. But that could be, that, is that a suggestion, Mayor?
I mean, possibly, or maybe a separate outreach. Uh, I mean, possibly, or maybe a separate outreach to students.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. I, I think that's a good idea.
So hearing the feedback from the, from the committee tonight, I mean, I agree, you know, that having a little bit more time, especially to get the survey data back in a more comprehensive way would be helpful and ask some questions about it, but not to, not to take too long. I, I feel like the December timeframe is just pushing it out to a point where people, they, families need to make decisions, the schools need to plan to be able to integrate students if the decision's made to, to make that change. I, I would suggest maybe a, a committee of the whole meeting at 6:00 before our school committee meeting on the 4th, and then we put it on the agenda for a vote on the 18th, which will be the next regular school committee meeting of November. Is that?
Can you just say that again?
So a committee of the whole for 6:00 PM on November 4th, which is our next regular meeting. So prior to that, we'll do a committee.
Yeah.
And then put it on the agenda for a vote on November 18th.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep. I'd like to say that I liked the idea of having a vote on November 18th. I do agree that pushing it off to December might be a little bit, and I think that November 18th would be a good little in-between, between the 4th and the 2nd. And I also just wanted to agree with Member Pangalo that I think that we should have more survey data from the actual students to see how they might react to a train, a change in transition like that. Some of the people I've spoken to from Salt and Stall have also said, like, people that I know personally have said that transitioning from Salt and Stall to the high school has also been a hard change because they don't know as many people. And so it was harder to have that connection with other students. And so on one end, we can have more interaction between people from Salt and Stall and Collins if this change were to happen, but it would also be a little bit of a shock for people who might not know people because, you know, obviously, Salt and Stall people might not know people from Collins, so it is still a little bit of a shock. But from what I know personally, I think that it would be a good decision, just knowing based on people didn't know each other when coming into high school.
Yeah. I think it's a great point. And now it's, that, you know, reminds me that there's going to be a cohort of students from Salt and Stall who will go to Collins and then go right up to Salem High School, right? And I think that's probably a cohort that requires some particular attention. That's a lot of transition in just three years. Member Manning.
Yeah, I want to push back a little bit on the 6 o'clock call suggestion, only because with the meeting at 7:00, if we have the, the first meeting at 6:00, I think it sounds like we're agreeing it's, it's an important issue that we need more time to talk. But if we come in for a 6 o'clock and we, you know, at like 10 or 7, people are going to be like, you know, we have to like take, you know, take a break, get and start for 7 o'clock. I'm wondering, could we like say 5:00 and, you know, so, and then if we only take an hour and a half, fine, we get that half an hour, we, you know, but I'd rather have a little too much time than, I guess I'm already feeling rushed when you said 6 o'clock. I mean, then the meeting at 7:00, I was like, bah, that's not, you know, so may, maybe a, a 2:00 thing there would be helpful.
We can do that 5:00 on the, on the, on the 4th.
Thank you.
You said, you said 5:00.
5:00, 5:30.
I just want to be sure that we can get all of the materials, all of the survey materials before, like a couple of days before that meeting, just so that we can all walk in really prepared with our questions and, and understand what we're, what, what we're dealing with.
Like the Wednesday before?
That would be great.
Okay.
We should check with Amanda if she can come because we were all nodding our heads, but as Beth Ann said, Amanda would be a, you know.
Yeah. Amanda, would you be able to do November 4th at 5:00 PM for Committee of the Whole?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make it happen. Thanks for checking.
Didn't forget about you.
Thank you.
Just to, just so I'm clear, how many students are K, are in 6th, 7th and 8th at Salt and Stall, right?
Total is about 140 students.
And how many staff, or how many educators?
Principal Jellison, I think there's about, or Ms. Joll, I think it's about 10. Yeah, okay. There's a couple that are 5th, 6th, so it's no less than eight, but no more than 10, I would say. Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments in the committee on this topic?
Yep, Mark.
Sorry, just to clarify, when you said 140 students enrolled 6th through 8th, did you mean currently, or is that the, what's the amount of people in the 5th grade that be moving up?
Well, so it's 140 currently in 6th, 7th and 8th, and the 5th grade has, Ms. Jellison, the 5th grade there is like 20, is pretty full, right? Okay. So there you go.
Thank you.
Mark, you can do the math there, right? 28 plus 26, okay. You can help me out. Oh, you had, you had him, okay. Oh, he's at Carlton. Oh, okay. We won't hold that against him.
All right. Anything, nothing further on this? All right. It's still your show.
Yes, so we're, thank you for the discussion. We're gonna, I'm gonna pass it over to Deputy Superintendent Carbone.
Okay, so I'm gonna move us on to school improvement plans. So in your electronic packets, not, oh, sure. In your electronic packet, you have copies of the school improvement plans for each of our 11 schools. And so I, my job tonight is just to provide some high-level framing for those so you know what you're looking at and what to look for as you review them. I think our goal is to submit those to you tonight for your review over the next couple of weeks. And in the spirit of doing votes, hope to have a vote on November 4th, at the November 4th meeting, in terms of accepting those, those plans. So just as, as I said, some high-level framing, the school improvement plans are required by mass general law that each school have an annual plan with student performance goals. The school improvement plans and the law does stipulate that those should be developed in concert and in collaboration with each school site council, and that they should align to the district plan. The district is supposed to submit three-year plans to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And as you know, we do have a strategic plan that is from 2023 to 2026. And so that is the sort of guiding document that our leaders have used to align their school improvement plans. So just in terms of overall timeline, so that you have sort of a sense of the timing in terms of how the school improvement plans were developed, we have our Summer Leadership Institute where all our principals and all our school leaders, team chairs, assistant principals, and all our instructional coaches attend. And this is a space where the, the superintendent frames district goals and priorities from the school improvement, from the strategic plan. So the strategic plan goes till 2026, but Dr. Zryk has sort of backed up a year and said by the end of 2025, we want to be this close to meeting the, the final goals in the school, in the strategic plan. So that framing is provided to schools, and we gave them lots of time to start to plan their own individual school goals in alignment with the district goals. We want all our schools sort of rowing in the same direction. So if we're all sort of headed in that direction, we'll ultimately meet the goals in the strategic plan. In July, we provided a school improvement plan template to our leaders, and we provided them stipend money so that they could meet with their teams over the summer and pay members of their teams to engage in collaborative planning with them. And those meetings were scheduled well in advance of the summer so that they could be inclusive, and people knew that those were happening. And of course, we respected their time by offering a stipend for them to participate. By early August, we have preliminary MCAS data available so that principals and their teams could really be digging into student achievement and thinking about goals for the coming year. And then throughout August and into September, principals and their teams drafted their school improvement plans. We asked that principals share those with their staff and faculty on the first day, you know, sometime during the opening days of the school year, and to gather feedback. And of course, in September, to also engage their school site councils in feedback. Dr. Zryk and I also reviewed the plans and provided principals with tailored feedback to their plan. And then toward the middle, to the end of September and into October, principals finalized their SIPs based on the feedback that they received from all those stakeholders. So I just want to sort of give you an overview of the components of the school improvement plan. So as you engage with them, you know what you're looking at. So each school improvement plan opens with a two-column table. On one side, the left-hand side, are end-of-year goals for the district, and then on the right-hand side are school goals that align to those, to those goals, so that you can sort of see the alignment. We asked each school to do a thorough data analysis, and they actually presented that in a PowerPoint slide deck that is attached to each school improvement plan. We wanted principals with their teams to do a real deep dive into their, the school year that just closed at the time, 2023, 24, and look at their outcome data to really be thoughtful about where they had some successes and where there were still opportunities for improvement. And so those data stories are contained in slide decks. Those were also shared with faculty as a means for sort of reflecting on the year that just closed and thinking ahead to the year that was just going to open. And so those are linked to the school improvement plans. Following are a set of action plans, and we've asked them to align those to the pillars in the school, in the strategic plan. So three main areas, student achievement, which is our elevate learning in the strategic plan, student culture, which is centering belonging, and staff culture, which is empowering educators. So you'll see those three components, and schools develop their action plans aligned to those. And then finally, we ask schools to think about what professional development they would use to, how they would use their PD time. So as you know, we have lots of release time, full and half-day release times. We also have 25 hours of contractual meeting time that principals can use to plan for engaging staff in collaborative planning and/or professional development. And we ask schools to think about that. It's hard to plan that out for the full year, so we ask them to stretch the, you know, their thinking to plan out the PD from August to December. We have step-back meetings mid-year to see how they're progressing on their goals. They'll come and meet with the executive team and report on the goals in their school improvement plan. They'll rate them, either we're on target, we're off-target but not that far, or we are definitely off-target and we need to do some mid-course corrections. And then based on that information, we ask them to complete their professional development plan for the rest of the year. So that's sort of the framing, and so happy reading. It's about 100 pages, so enjoy. But we'd ask that you, you know, please forward any questions that you might have so that we can answer those for you. But what you're looking at, they're sort of developed in the same way, which helps, I think, as you go through them. You're not trying to fight the format. The format is similar. So hopefully you find them informative as committee members.
Thank you, Member Manning.
Yeah, if, if they, if everything you just said basically comes down to a look at last year and then planning for this year, okay, without identifying any specific school, when MCAS data did come in, were there any big surprises like that a school had, really thought something was going really well, and then MCAS came in and it was like the shock of the century, or did everybody pretty well from all the work they did over the summer? Did it really match up with, with the data that came in then from, in the fall?
I would say it pretty much matched up. We do a lot of, you know, we have district common assessments, and we use the STAR as a benchmark three times and, over the course of the year. So our schools are really data, you know, engaged in data-informed decision-making throughout the year. So I don't think, there was certainly nothing that was like, oh my gosh, you know, we didn't plan for that.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda.
I guess I'll turn it over to Beth Ann Cornell. I'll cease.
Thank you. And after, in a minute, I'll turn it over to other people who are here who can join us and add some important information. So on October 8th, the MSBA Designer Selection Panel, which was myself, Superintendent Zryk, and Anna Friedman on behalf of Mayor Pangalo, participated in the designer selection interviews and ultimately the vote. They were really exciting. It was a really exciting process, I thought, to watch all of the firms come through and really tailor their presentations to our students and our community. But the one that really came out on top was Perkins &amp; Will. They were great. They were incredibly Salem-specific. They, they really understood our academic goals around integrated CTE and also athletics. They kind of valued the things about our building that aren't terrible, that we could, you know, improve upon. They focused on our music and theater programs and how excellent they are. They, they sort of spoke as if they had been living with us for a long time. So it was, you know, we all voted for them. They were, I think, pretty overwhelmingly the selected firm. I have, they are, they're also incredibly, the team that they're going to have working with us are very diverse. So there are a lot of Spanish speakers on the team. They have incredible plans for community outreach. I have the benefit of having worked with Perkins &amp; Will in the past in my former job at Wentworth Institute of Technology where, so I had the benefit of being a community member when they were redoing our library, and just that the outreach and the constant engagement. I used to have people just pop into my office, you know, to talk to me about how it was going. So I, I personally feel really great about our selection. We were all just incredibly impressed. I think we, we really nailed it. I don't think we could have done any better for Salem in our selection. And they're also a very well-respected and well-regarded firm in Massachusetts. So the fact that they wanted us and worked so hard to get us was pretty great. We felt pretty great about that. So the next step is that we have to negotiate a fee agreement with them. And so we have ANZER Advisory who's going to take the lead on that with the support of, we have a finance subcommittee. They're gonna help lead that negotiation. On October 17th, I wasn't there, but I've already seen this presentation. The Perkins &amp; Will came in and gave the entire school building committee an opport, the presentation that they gave to us during the interviews. And I would encourage every community member to watch the film of that on SATV so you can really see who they are, what they're proposing. I think our communications director, Chris, is gonna put that, put that out sometime tonight or tomorrow. And then I encourage all school committee members to share it out. Maybe city councilors share it out. It's, it's just great. It's incredibly impressive. I think everybody will be as impressed as I am. And then on November 21st, we have our next meeting in the Salem High School School Library. Everybody is invited. You can watch it on television, but they're, they're really interesting and, and I'm excited to be a part of it. To give more professional update on this, I'm hoping that Margaret and Rick could come up here and give us, kind of summarize for everybody. Can I do that? Am I allowed to invite people?
Yeah, well, I also want, so I want to recognize our illustrious school building co-chairs, Rick Jones and Nate Bryant, who are leading the school building committee. And Margaret Wood from ANZER Advisory is the owner's project manager. Do you want to come on over to the?
And I should say that Margaret Wood drove fast and furious to get here to help present.
Do you want to start?
I'm Rick Jones. Is that on?
It's on. Yep.
I'm the co-chair of the building committee with Nate, who I think most of you know. I've lived in Salem about 14 years. I'm an architect, and I have a practice here in Salem in Derby Square. And I have two kids in the district, two girls in the district. So I'm very excited to be serving as the co-chair.
So.
Do you want me to say more, or you want to do this part?
That's good. So I'm Margaret Wood. I am an architect by training, but I worked for 20 years. I am an architect by training, but I worked for 20 years as an owner's project manager on schools, K-12 schools. And I'm actually working on some other things in Salem, but we're very excited to be part of the team here. The owner's project manager role, as the MSBA has created it, is essentially we act as an extension of the district and the city in providing consulting. We basically manage the project as a, as an extension of the city. So I, and I am, my compatriots, I have three other team members, so I'm not the only person you'll see on the project, but I am the first. And the reason for that is, in our office, I take the lead on negotiating the designer fees, which we actually have concluded a negotiation with Perkins &amp; Will. And also, in this case, we were very fortunate that the building committee meeting followed so closely on the selection of the designer because now there's a schedule on the table, and the school committee has a really important role here. There's actually three kind of major steps in the process. So let me just say overall, because I don't know how much everybody knows about the process, the way these projects get approved is the city takes on the process of doing what's called a feasibility study. And that has several components, including developing options for the project and developing an educational program. And then once the options have been identified, the committee is involved with selecting a particular option, and then that option, a cost for that option is developed, and then there will be a process for securing funding for the project. So all of that process takes, it will take about a year and a half. But the school, some of the first steps are the school committees. So just to talk a little bit about that. So the designer is on board to develop these options. But the options that are on the table right now include a high school or a middle school high school. And I know that we're really building here on the foundation that's already been established by other discussion, including the master plan most recently. But we are ready to launch, and it is actually important that we launch quickly because, as Rick said at the last building committee meeting, these projects, and you've probably heard this about school projects, you know, the cost of the project as you're moving through the process is escalating. So you want to sort of launch efficiently and kind of make decisions efficiently. So the school committee's decisions are to give direction on the high school or middle school high school choice. We are also, several folks who are working for the district are going to write an education program for the project, and that will come before the school committee for discussion and approval. And then the third step is what's called a space summary, which is having selected, having approved the educational program, then the space summary outlines all the individual spaces to the square foot. And that space summary becomes a kind of key part of the developed design. So we'd like to ask for your consideration that the, this committee take up the discussion of the high school versus middle school high school as soon as you can, with potentially having a vote on it in December, then having a vote on the educational program in January, and having a vote on the space summary in February. And I realize all of this terminology probably sounds very foreign, but you will all become very fluent in it over the next couple of months. And I think one of the advantages of moving quickly through the process, aside from the kind of overall sort of savings that you have in the escalation cost of the project as it, as it happens over time, is also just staying focused on the process and moving quickly. It is possible to take longer, but I'm not necessarily sure that that facilitates decision-making when these three pieces are tied so closely together. So I wanted to just give that overview. Do you want to add anything that to, Rick? And then to see if you all had questions for us.
Yeah, only that the whole arc that Margaret outlined is about a 14-to-16-month schedule overall. That last two months would be kind of marshaling all the information for the MSBA. I know that the front piece sounds very fast. The latter half of that is really focused on design, and the intent of that is that when you go to the MSBA and ask for money, that's all the money you will ever get from the MSBA for this project. So the more information we have and the more complete our documents are, the more time we devote to design in this phase, the more assured we will be of the number that we're asking for. So we have more confidence in that number if we have more information when we go to the cost estimating. So that's why some of these things seem to be coming quickly at the beginning because we're trying to preserve that time at the end for the work that should be done in the second half of this.
Yeah. And of course, I realize as I'm listening to myself, I've already launched into the acronym. So MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority, they, they, basically a penny of our sales, of every dollar of our sales tax goes into a pot statewide, and the subsidy for school projects is scaled to community wealth and is applied for competitively. So Salem, I think, is very fortunate to be in what the MSBA calls the pipeline for a high school project, which could be renovation, could be a new building, could be some mix-up, matchup of the two. But as Rick says, you know, there's the decision about high school versus middle school high school and the program and the space summary, but then that informs the development of options and the public discussion of options, and then the development of a single option. So your piece of it happens to be at the beginning, but it facilitates all the rest of it. So questions?
I just want to add something to, just in terms of like my own understanding of this. The thing, the thing that like eats at me about this process is that when we get a, like, when we get approved for the money, you're getting approved for like labor and construction costs today, but this building is not getting built today. So every single day, the cost of this goes up. So every single day that we don't make decisions or light a fire under the design team costs us money that we then have to go to the Salem taxpayer and ask for. So I do not like this process. I've already discussed this with people. It is not my favorite. I think it is, it puts us at a disadvantage, but that is, because that is the rush. It, it just is. And I, but I will say just on behalf of all of us here, I've been very clear with everybody on the design committee, on the building committee, that the decision about whether we have a, a middle school high school or a high school is not going to be driven by buildings. It's going to be driven by what's best for students, and that we ultimately are the people who will make that decision based on the public input that we've been accumulating for the past, since before I was on this committee when we had the.
Facilities.
Facility Master.
The Facility Master Plan. And most recently in the spring, when we've been reaching out to community members to get their, and teachers to get their opinions and suggestions. So I just want everybody to know that I feel like I've been representing that pretty clearly to the team, that this is our decision to make. And while we may not be able to avoid being rushed to make that decision, it is still ours. It is still our decision to make. But, and we do all need to keep in mind that if we delay, this is a lot of money. It's a lot of money, and, and we want to do it well. We want to do it well for kids. We want to do it well for the city, and every community member who lives here, you know, should feel really good about it. So I just wanted to sort of add that piece of it. It drives me insane. I dislike it, but that's where, that's what we're living with.
So I want to say that a couple things. First of all, thank you for stressing that, because this is where the MSBA is coming from. They, they want to see the project driven by the program, the educational program and the work that you all do. It's, the, the search is for the project that is the best combination of fit with the educational program and with the cost. The good news is it's a little bit better than what you described.
Okay, good.
In the sense that, I don't want anyone to think they're digging themselves a hole here, because that's not the case. Having selected the best option, what part of the calculation that's done is the cost of the project at the time that it's, that it's bid? So the, what, what is true is if you got to the point that you had signed an agreement and then you delayed the project, I think you would be at risk. But I don't want anyone to think they're at risk here. It, it's just, the overall timeline of the project means that, just over the course of doing the work, you're acquiring escalation. But you don't acquire escalation after you, the escalation is built into the funding agreement, and the MSBA participates in that, so.
The, the other thing with the decisions you all will make and approve is that the MSBA then weighs in on them. So we're trying to get on a cycle with you and the MSBA monthly meetings so that you approve things and then they approve things. And so we're kind of, Margaret has built this elaborate flow chart for all the things that have to happen. And if one thing slides and we miss the MSBA window for their meeting, then we're, we've lost a month in the, in the process.
So, you know, again, I think that's a lot of pressure to put on all of you, but I, I want to stress the importance of your work as the grounding of the project, and which is why we wanted to come as soon as we could to tell you about it. So does, are there other questions?
Member Manning?
Yeah. The decision to have like a, whatever the grade configuration, right? You know, is huge.
It is.
Okay. And I feel like the, the timeline that you're sort of telling us that you need us to do this, I, I don't, I don't feel at all in a position to make a decision on that without knowing about the potential of that site for even the high school.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're, I won't say we, I sort of feel I'm in the position that I haven't heard anything yet about the possibilities of the high school being placed on that site.
Yeah.
Again, bigger, smaller, half renovated, half whatever.
Mm-hmm.
So to say you need the educational configuration, you know, do, do I want a middle school and a high school? Do I want a seventh or 12th? Do I want a whatever? I don't even, I don't even know how, if we're going to get the high school that we, you know. So how do we do that?
So just to be clear, so what, what I'm really asking for here is time on your next couple, next several agendas for us to come, myself and the design team, to come and present what that information looks like. And that includes taking and making a very kind of high-level estimate of construction cost as well as operating cost, because there are different operating costs between the two. So there's what it looks like, there's the cost of the project, and there's the, there's the operating cost. And I think you have to look at all of those while being aware, being clear that your role here is to sort of think about what the best educational program is for the district. So we're not just going to, I'm not going to go away and say, you know, come back in December and see if you've decided. We want to come and make several presentations at a busy time of year.
If I can just, yeah. But if the presentations are on the operating cost and, you know, those kinds of things, it's still not, I haven't heard you say how I would know about the potential of what actually can go on that site.
Well, that's, that's because I'm the owner's project manager. So the design team is also coming to these meetings to present design thinking about what that might look like.
Okay.
Yeah.
So before, so before we have to start really making decisions on the educational.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want to make a decision on an educational plan and then find out it meant that, oops, we have to cut off like, you know, five rooms from the high school to make the middle school fit.
Yeah.
Or that kind of thing. And I mean, that's a silly exaggeration, but.
No, it's.
But the reality of.
Good example.
Placing, you know, a, you know, what we're going to do with buildings and the site, that is, I, I can't separate that from, you know, I'd, yeah, I'd love to say, I think the educational, you know, design for this city, for these, you know, these two grade levels would be, you know, whatever. And then, and so, poof, I will make the site big enough so we can do that.
Do everything you want to do.
And, yeah, but you know, if we can't, the reality is we can't, then we don't want to waste time making the educational decision that isn't going to be feasible at all.
Yeah.
You know, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
So I just.
Understood.
Member Cornell?
Those are really good points, and I think I'm speaking in shorthand too, because now all of a sudden I know what I'm talking about with regard to design from the, from the interview process, because I really learned a lot. So when, like, when we apply for the, for the MSBA money, we, we gave them options, right? And said, we're either looking at like a middle school high school or just a high school. So everybody who's, who interviewed gave us options. Like, here's what this could look like. Perkins &amp; Will, and, and this is why we should all watch the video, but I'll send it to you later. Theirs is like this digital three-dimensional presentation that gives you several different options about how the actual configuration could look. They've anticipated, you know, because we've had a lot of public conversations about grade configuration in Salem. So even without seeing that data from us, they anticipated parents' number-one fears, which is how you keep those kids separate from one another when these kids are on a different developmental course than these kids. So they showed us versions of like, it could look like this, where they come in through separate entrances, they spend all their time apart. It could look like this. And so it's this really cool digital rendering of options without even seeing what our interests are yet. So again, that's why I think I was like forgetting that not everybody has seen this. So it's like, that's what's impressive to me, is that they were able to game it out a little bit so they could show us, you know, we've been, we emphasized to everybody who applied that we, we really want to have an integrated CTE program. So CTE isn't like its own little island, and those kids go there, and they're not considering how CTE relates to the academic programs. And so they could sort of digitally show you how to put those academic programs in closer proximity to CTE. And so for me, that's why I feel like, oh, I know they can do it, because I've seen it. So, so that, but that won't be the whole story either, because they do need that feedback from the feedback that we've collected as a district, which is what they can come in and present to us to make it even more specific to us, even though right now it is actually pretty specific to us.
But, but it, but does it show, I, I mean, they have the cool, you know, mockups of the digital buildings. But does it show that those actually fit on the site?
Yes.
Are we at that point where we know the site enough to know?
They do. So they came in and all, anybody who applied came in, did a walk-through all over the place. So they know where all the ledge is.
Yeah.
So part of their digital rendering is like, there's a bunch of ledge here. Like, here's, you have this space out and back. They know the site backwards and forwards.
Okay.
So, you know, that's why some of the firms, like, they knew the site, but it still didn't quite make sense. They were like, we need more of a front-facing thing on, on, you know.
Highland.
Highland Avenue, sorry, I lost it. And it's like, there's no entrance to Highland Avenue, you know? And there's a whole other thing. It just like, it was fine, but it wasn't, it didn't feel realistic. But they do know it. They know, they know the site. So the ledge thing too, once you see it in the digital rendering, you can see that they, they have options for how to work around that.
Yeah, I just want to add, so the designer selection process started, I don't know, the RFS, I think, we distributed in August.
Sure.
Yeah, it was in, actually, it was in July. We gave them all the existing drawings of the high school and the survey, and Perkins &amp; Will was, I mean, they all did, by the way, they all did design options. It's fairly interesting to look at the four applications next to each other. Perkins &amp; Will, you know, one of the reasons they were selected was that they took it and they really, they already made it into a digital model that you can manipulate, and it's the whole site.
Mm-hmm.
And it's based on all of the data that we gave them. So they know where the existing building is. They know how big the existing building rooms are. They know what the different levels of the site. I mean, they have that information, and they didn't waste any time after they were I mean, they have that information, and they didn't waste any time, after they were shortlisted, to develop this interview presentation.
So we'll have that information when you, when we're, okay?
Yep. Member Hoffman?
I have a question, and it might not be relevant, but I'm also curious, when you design the buildings, do you also account for the drop-off and pickups of two different schools, so that we don't have a cluster of madness
Yeah.
In the mornings and, okay.
Yeah. Actually, there's a, all of the teams, including this one, have a transportation consultant on the project, and their job is both to make recommendations about how to make the onsite traffic work, but also to look at ways that you might modify vehicular or pedestrian traffic around. And actually, that's another thing Perkins and Will did really nicely, they sort of showed the complexity of the overall city in that area.
The bike lane?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bike lanes, yeah.
The context of the Highland Ave project, South, South Summ train station, like, the relationships with those existing things, or those upcoming projects.
I mean, there was, at one point, some plans that included access from Highland Ave. I don't know who would want to actually do that, but hey, Adam.
Member Cornell?
And one thing, too, that I think is worth noting, because everyone knows that I care deeply about athletics, is what I've learned from this project is that we could never build a fieldhouse like the one we have with the MSBA money. It's not possible. Like, so we have this like really extraordinary fieldhouse that just, most schools don't have anything like it, as we all know. So Perkins and Will, their design is really like, how do we, how do we use the footprint of the fieldhouse, because it's exceptional, and kind of work everything else around. And they also give us options for, what if we do a teardown? What if we keep most of it? If it's a renovation, if it's a teardown, you know, like, the options are sort of, they really gamed out so many different options.
If you take down one wall, maybe we can actually have a 50-odd dash. Because right now, we can't. There's no place in there that's 50-odd.
Any other questions or comments? So I think the takeaway is, you'll be back with, with the design team to do some additional presentations to this group. We are, as Member Cornell mentioned, we had had some public meetings, input meetings to gather feedback from the community around grade configuration concepts over the spring. There's going to be, I think we're hoping to have a couple more over the next month or so, as well as a Zoom option for a third. Dr. Sreik will be going back out to the schools to talk with staff about their feedback around that question, because that is the first question that we're going to have to grapple with and make a decision on potentially as soon as this December, so.
Yeah, and, you know, we're also, I think Dr. Sreik made a good point, that we don't want to get tangled up in your budget season, you know, we want to take advantage of this moment in moving this along. So, and I also want to, I want to give a bit of a shout-out. So the person who'll be the day-to-day contact with the design team couldn't join us tonight, but she lives in Marblehead, and, and in her presentation, she, she actually presented what she and her husband do every year at their house in Marblehead. There's a, it's so, even just seasonally, I encourage you to watch the presentation. It was, it's pretty great. So they definitely, definitely in the spirit of Salem in October, so.
Playing the Halloween card pretty, pretty early.
Playing the Halloween card, yep. She definitely played the Halloween card.
Yeah, and I would just, I have one last thing, and they say this, I think, they stated it at the interview, I don't know if they say it in, when they rehashed it for the committee, but they're going to, if you watch it and you're like, you see all this amazing stuff, and it is a great sell, they were very quick to say, the one ingredient that's missing is you, because we have done all of this, only having read or, you know, learned what we can from the master plan and from the things that are available in public information about Salem. And what we really need is to hear from you all, your vision for the school, and then we will invest that in these schemes. So
Yeah.
You have to take that to heart.
Imagine what they can do now, they'll, they'll have everybody's voices in the mix.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finance and Operations report.
I have no report, just thanks to the committee members who participated in our National School Lunch Week programming last week, and also in our witchcraft playground ribbon-cutting. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sreik, Salem Academy Charter School Enrollment Expansion Reapplication.
So, just on the Salem Academy Charter School Enrollment Expansion, many of the folks here were at the meeting on Tuesday night, where Salem Academy voted to resubmit their application to the Board of, Department of Education's Board. They revoted, admitting that they had violated open meeting law. At which point, the city solicitor did send a correspondence to the Department of Education indicating that their application was late and should not be considered for expansion. The letter went the day after, I think, to the Department of Education. I did have a, two different conversations with the commissioner, the last one being this morning, and unfortunately, the response was that there were multiple, that the precedent had already been set, set over the years, that they have accepted late applications in the past. And so that's not really that encouraging to me, but that was what was relayed, and both this year and in previous years, that there's a precedent that, you know, schools have asked for extensions and they've received them, or they've just submitted it late and were granted the opportunity to still be reviewed by the, by the commissioner's office. So now, unfortunately, we move to the next phase, which is that the commission, the charter office of the Department of Education will review the applications for their completeness and their merit, and make, and, and in conjunction with the commissioner, will make a recommendation to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, either for their January or February board meeting. We should know pretty soon if it'll be January or February. And in the meantime, the public here in Salem has the opportunity to weigh in, and I can assure you that I, as a member of the public, and I know other members of the school committee will want to weigh in and offer commentary to the commissioner and to the board about the application for a lot of the things we've enumerated previously. But at this point, it looks like it is going to be reviewed, and either they'll make a recommendation to the board or not, and then the board will vote, you know, in support or not. It does seem that the board typically accepts the commissioner's recommendations. So if the commissioner accepts a favorable, you know, you know, favorably reports out on their application, then it does seem that the board will vote to support the application. So, but again, we have some time, and there's also public meetings at the, they have their own public meeting at the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, and I've already circulated an email address of places we can send comments to as well, but, you know, we're not, and I can speak for myself, you know, from the district standpoint, we're going to be aggressive in our, in our, you know, our pursuit, or our explanation of why we don't think that this is justified, and that Salem doesn't need the expansion of the charter seats. I don't know if, do you want to add anything to that, Mayor?
No, I mean, I think, I think that summed it up pretty well, that the fact that the vote came after the deadline that the board had published as the official deadline, I thought was a compelling reason to reject it and not even accept the application. Disappointed that to hear otherwise. So we'll, we'll make the case, I mean, the application was, was not complete, in my opinion. Their needs analysis was only reflective of their own community and not of the larger community, and nor is it merited. I think that if you believe the whole premise of the charter school movement, and when it started in the early 90s, was based around this idea that parents needed to have choices in school districts that were quote-unquote failing their, their students, and so charters were allowed to be established and expanded. And I think demonstrably, Salem Public School, our district is not failing families, not failing kids, and is on a path for, for an improvement that puts it at the top of the 26 gateway cities. So neither on the merits nor on the, or on the completeness of the application, do I feel that this is something that should be advanced, and I'm prepared to make that case to the board, or the commissioner, and then the board, if necessary.
Yeah, I would just say one other thing. When I spoke to the commissioner today, the thing that is very discouraging to me, that I, you know, reiterated to him in the conversation is, you know, yes, I don't support open meeting law violations, but what I am concerned about is there is an expectation that there is engagement with the community. And there was no engagement with the Salem Public Schools, which I think is a significant part of the community, when you're talking about a charter for one city and where the city schooled district. There was no discussion, and there was really no discussion with the public at all. There was discussion with their internal staff and families, but there was no larger discussion with the larger Salem community, elected officials, you name it, I mean, community organizations, were not part of a larger discussion. That is not the spirit of what should happen in this, these applications. And if the board is going to, and the commissioner are going to take seriously that there is collaboration and partnership in these applications, then, in my opinion, they failed to meet that bar. And I'd be very discouraged that they're supporting a, an application that didn't at least consider how we could work more closely together around, you know, the, the request for the additional seats. And that, to me, to your point, is totally against what the spirit of charter schools should be, which is collaboration, fostering innovation, which I don't see any of that right now, and just the opposite. I see an organization that, that, you know, tried to not include us, for, you can speculate for whatever reason, but we were not included in that. And I've, you know, I've expressed that to the executive director since last week, and I expressed that to the commissioner, and I do hope they listen, because I, I don't think this is a precedent that the state of Massachusetts should be setting.
I would just follow on that, that another premise, not only that this collaboration with the community, but when the charter schools were first opened, the understanding was that because they were not restricted as much as the public schools were, in that they didn't, a lot of them didn't have, you know, unions, they didn't have licensing for, for staff, they still, you know, a lot of places still don't, until the, you know, we could look at, at that in Salem. But the one thing that, besides the collaboration about the, the application, just the general lack of collaboration all through the years. I forget when the thing opened, in the 90s or whenever, but I distinctly remember being at the meeting, arguing against it for, for the middle school. And part of the whole pitch was, because this mall, because they don't get, have the same rules they have to follow, like, it's innovation, it's new ideas, it's new design, and it will be shared back to the public school system, so that you then can build on that in the public school system. Now, I waited a long time before I gave up waiting for something to come over to the middle school from them, I know that. I, I can honestly say, from whenever that opened, that academy, academy opened, nothing came back from them to the Salem Public Schools that I remember. Not one program, not one idea, not one suggestion, not one success, not one failure, nothing. And so, to me, the lack of discussion of the application is just reflective of the lack of, you know, the, from the, from the get-go, we've just been ignored, you know? So I, I just think that's a whole nother aspect of it, that, like I said, I gave up long ago thinking they're going to share something, but nothing ever came over. And, and that, that, I think, is just as indicative of, you know, if, if the charter was awarded, because you're going to do this, this, and it doesn't happen, you know, you know, what does that say? You know, I think that, I think that in our discussions or our messaging to DESI, we should also be messaging that fact, that that's another whole gap that all through the years has been taking place.
Anyone else? All right, so I guess that is the update on that. I mean, I, I think that the, the loose relationship with the deadline is challenging for me to kind of, to be comfortable with. I think it also undermines other operators at that meeting. They indicated, you know, that they wanted to act so that other charter operators couldn't come in and take Salem's seats because of the, the status of our MCAS data from two years prior. And if that's truly the case, then the deadline should mean something, and it's disappointing to hear that it doesn't, because I think it doesn't, it creates an unlevel playing field in, within the charter community itself. And I don't, I don't personally view two minutes of public comment at a forced revote because of an open meeting law violation, meaningful community partnerships or engagement, so, that's all. So, dig that. All right, subcommittee reports.
We have the school improvement plans under motions, we're going to postpone that to
We're going to vote on that at the next, or ask for a vote to accept them at the next meeting.
Okay, November 4th. Any announcements from committee members? Seeing none. Item 10.
I'll make a motion for us to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Under discussion, seeing none. Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Myself? Yes, we are adjourned.